Good evening again, everyone. Time is 6:30. This regular meeting of the City Council is now called to order. Roll call. We do have two council members present. Councilmember Shelton is on his way here now, so she'll be here shortly. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation. Councilmember Jackson, will you give us an invocation, please?
Our Heavenly Father, we come to you on this wonderful day, this beautiful day, to thank you, Lord. Thank you for allowing us to symbolize one. Lord, you say it anywhere that's three or more gathered, you'll be in the mix. We ask you to be in the mix of this meeting as we make the decisions and the right decision, what best fits the City of Social Circle. In your Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Tyson. Okay, make sure it's working. Do you have some announcements for this evening? First thing, Municipal Court, April the 21st at 1:00 p.m. in our community room. Tree Board Meeting, April the 22nd at 6:00 p.m., also in our community room. Planning Commission will meet April the 27th, 6:00 p.m. at the Middle School Activity Center. Our next council work session will be May the 6th, 6:30 p.m. in the community room.
It's been moved to the school.
I'm sorry, that has been moved to the Middle School Activity Center as well. Main Street Commission Meeting, May the 11th, 8:00 a.m. at Church at the Grove. The Georgia Initiative for Community Housing Meeting, May the 11th, 10:00 a.m., and that's a Zoom meeting. Historic Preservation Commission meets on May the 11th at 6:00 p.m. in the community room. Our next council meeting will be May 18th, 6:30 p.m. at the Middle School Activity We have some presentations this afternoon. Many of you will recall back in September, October of last year, the City Council voted to name one of the bridges here in town on South Cherokee in honor of Mr. Robert Bobby Howard. After doing that, on behalf of the mayor and council, I went to our House Representative, Mr. Bruce Williamson, and asked him to sponsor a resolution in recognition of Mr. Howard. Ms. Rachel Howard is here tonight. Mr. Williamson is here to present his resolution that was approved by the House to Ms. Howard. So Bruce, welcome. Thank you. Please.
Mayor, if y'all don't mind, I'm gonna put my backs to the City Council and talk to the family.
That's fine, please.
And Councilman, thank you so much for that opening prayer. It is all about the Lord and his presence in our lives, and I just love it that we as citizens of the United States of America can enjoy coming together under the name of God as we, and then say the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag. So thank you, Councilman Jackson, for that opening prayer. Mayor Keener knows how much I enjoy doing this. It's one of the highest honors I have, serving as Walton County State Representative, to come before people and honor those citizens in our community that have made a difference for not only their family lives and businesses they're associated with, but in the fabric of our community. And it's my pleasure, and I'm so thankful for Mayor Keener asking me to do this, because I really didn't know Mr. Howard, but I did wanna read this resolution. He asked me to get passed by the Georgia House of Representatives, and it's important for all the citizens here to know that whenever something like this happens, this becomes a permanent part of the archives of our state. So Ms. Howard, family members, just know, I'm gonna read this, but just know for generations to come, your family members will be able to go to the Georgia State Archives and look up this honoring Mr. Howard. So if you bear with me, I'd like to read this. This House Resolution 37, and I was the proud sponsor of it. I represent the 115th District, which includes Social Circle and the eastern two-thirds of Walton County. It's a resolution recognizing and commended Robert Bobby Howard on his outstanding services as a civil rights advocate and activist and for other purposes. Whereas Robert Bobby Howard has long been recognized by the citizens of this state for the vital role that he has played in leadership and his deep personal commitment to the welfare of others, and whereas he has diligently and conscientiously devoted innumerable hours of his time, talents, and energy towards the betterment of his community, as evidenced dramatically by his local and regional civil rights activism, as well as his leadership with the Community Organization for Process and Education. And whereas Bobby's significant organizational leadership talents, remarkable patience and diplomacy, keen sense of vision, and sensitivity to the needs of his fellow citizens have earned him the respect and admiration of his colleagues and associates. And whereas, because of Bobby's commendable commitment to the needs of his local community, the mayor and council members of the City of Social Circle, Georgia convened on January the 16th, 2021, to designate the South Cherokee Road Bridge as a Robert Bobby Howard Bridge in his honor. And whereas it is abundantly fitting and proper that the outstanding accomplishments and contributions of this remarkable and distinguished individual be appropriately recognized, now therefore be it resolved by the House of Representatives that the members of this body recognize and commend Robert Bobby Howard for his efficient, effective, unselfish, and dedicated service as a civil rights advocate and activist, and extend the most sincere, best wishes for continued health and happiness of his family. Be it further resolved that the clerk of the House of Representatives is authorized and directed to make an appropriate copy of this resolution available to the family members. Read and adopted, January the 26th, 2021, William L. Riley. He's clerk of the House of Representatives. So this is a copy of it, and Mayor Keener, to his credit, got this framed, suitable for framing. So at this time, Ms. Howard, I'd like to present this to you.
Thank you, Bruce. Next item on our agenda, we have a Child's Voice, and I'll ask Ms. Lauren Gregory to come forward and have a few comments, please.
Yes. Hey, everyone, thank you so much for having me. I might kinda do the move-in thing, too. So thank you so much for your time and also for what you'll read for us a little later. I come from a Child's Voice Child Advocacy Center. All of you have the blue folder that has a little more information about our center, but we're located right here in Social Circle. So our center is a private nonprofit, and we serve Walton County and Newton County, so we're nestled right here in Social Circle. We're where Edward Jones and Dr. Dowd is, over there, Brookstone Place. But I'm here tonight because April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and our center is what's called a Child Advocacy Center. So our center works to help respond to cases of child abuse in the counties we serve. So every county has a child abuse protocol that says that when a child makes a disclosure of abuse, certain things need to happen, and we help those things happen. So our center works closely with law enforcement, the Division of Family and Children Services, the prosecution, mental health partners, the school system, all the people who get involved in cases of child abuse, to make sure that kids are protected, their voices are heard, and hopefully that offenders are held accountable. So we are a neutral, child-friendly environment where kids come to get what's called a forensic interview, to give the facts of their case in a really trauma-sensitive, neutral way that's also audio and video recorded, so it's used as evidence. And then we do medical exams to test for evidence, make sure that bodies are healthy, any treatment that's needed is provided. And then we do a lot of family support, because abuse is often perpetrated by someone known and trusted to the family. Ninety percent of the time, the person who sexually abuses a child is someone the child knows and trusts, and someone the family knows and trusts. So we do a lot of work with the families to recover. How are we gonna, you know, what comes next? How do we pay our bills? How do we do all these things? And then we do a lot of prevention education as well, because we know child abuse can be prevented. So that's just a little bit about our center. All of you have a brochure that tells you more, but we'd also love to invite you to come out for a tour, especially since we're right here in the community, and not everybody knows about us. A lot of people don't know we exist until they need to come to our center, and we'd like more people to know about us so that they can learn from us and have the education and also hopefully support us, since we are a private nonprofit. So if y'all have any questions, I'd love to answer them, or I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor, for the proclamation.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
If you'll bear with me, I'll read the proclamation and sit, because I'm at the speaker.
Yes, of course.
Proclamation reads, "Whereas according to the Children's Defense Fund's most recent State of America's Children Report, there were 673,000 confirmed cases of child abuse and/or neglect in America in 2018. And whereas the Georgia Family Connection Partnership reports that there were 173 substantiated cases of child abuse and/or neglect in Walton County, Georgia in 2019. Whereas in 2020, a Child's Voice Child Advocacy Center responded to 113 cases of child physical abuse, sexual abuse, and/or witness to a violent crime in Walton County, Georgia, by conducting forensic interviews, forensic medical examinations, and family support services. And whereas the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, suggests that reported cases of child abuse may underestimate the true occurrence and estimate that one in four American children experience some form of child maltreatment in their lifetimes. And whereas Darkness to Light reports that around one in 10 will be sexually abused by their 18th birthday, and only 38% of child victims will disclose their abuse. And whereas according to Darkness to Light, victims of child abuse are significantly more likely to experience emotional, psychological health, and behavioral issues. And whereas with a strong support system and effective counseling, children are able to heal from physical, sexual abuse and... Whereas children's advocacy centers, like a Child's Voice, work within the community to spread awareness about child abuse, teach citizens how to recognize the signs and respond to child abuse, and utilize a multidisciplinary approach to coordinating care for families with the help of law enforcement, D-facts, district attorney's office, school systems, and mental health counselors and... Whereas a Child's Voice Child Advocacy Center invites all residents of the City of Social Circle in Walton County to participate in Child Abuse Prevention Month in April of 2021 by sharing their time and talents to help create better, brighter futures for our children and families. Now therefore, I, David Keener, Mayor of the City of Social Circle, do hereby proclaim April 1st through the 30th, 2021, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Social Circle, and encourage all residents to become aware of the prevalence of child abuse in our community, and to learn how to properly recognize, respond to, and to prevent instances of child physical or sexual abuse by supporting children and families and the agencies that serve them in our community. In testimony whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the great seal of City of Social Circle this 20th day of April, 2021."
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Lauren. Next presentation is the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Ms. Schirmer, I'll ask you to introduce that.
Thank you. The Georgia Finance Officers Association announced recently that the City of Social Circle had received the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its budget for the last budget year. According to the GFOA, this award represents a significant achievement by the entity. It reflects the commitment of the governing body and staff to meeting the highest principles of government budgeting. In order to receive the budget award, the city had to satisfy nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well a city's budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. There are over 1,600 participants in the budget awards program nationwide. The most recent budget award recipients are posted on the GFOA website. This year thus far, there were 33 municipalities in Georgia recognized with this award, and Social Circle is the smallest by far that has achieved this award. This is the fourth year that the city has received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And I would like to recognize Jennifer Fricks, the Finance Director, for her efforts in making this happen.
Thank you, Adele. Jennifer, will you please come forward? Our next presentation is Employee Introduction and Recognition.
It's Amber McGivern, our Downtown Director.
I'm gonna go ahead with the rundown, if that's okay with you all, because my employee cannot make it tonight, so we'll push that to next month, if that's all right. This is a downtown rundown for April 2021. I'm excited to announce that we have a car show that will be in downtown on May 1st from 9:00 to 3:00. This is a wonderful opportunity for our downtown businesses, and we hope that many people will be in attendance. I will give an update next month on how it goes. We ask that everyone please come out and support this event. We have a summer concert series that will begin on May 14th that will be in Friendship Park. The first concert will be from 7:00 to 9:00, and local favorites Chris John and Scott will be playing that night. Our farmer's market in Friendship Park is up and running. We had to postpone the first few weeks because of the weather, but the market has done well. It is open on Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays of each week. Independence Day, this is just an update, but we are going to be moving the event downtown officially this year. We have worked out a spot to be able to shoot the fireworks from, to see them from downtown, so I'm very excited. This is a big move for us, and it'll be nice to have a celebration where the businesses can profit in downtown. And that's all I have.
Any questions for Amber? Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have citizens' requests. We have with us tonight pastors Eric Flagger, Flagger, I hope I didn't mess that up, and Michael Jenkins to speak to us.
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here, to stand before you. Mayor David Keener, it's a pleasure to meet you, and also congratulation on becoming the mayor of Social Circle, Georgia. Amen. And my council lady, Council Lady Price in my district, as well as Tyson, and my friends, Steve Shelton, and the city manager. We thank God for the opportunity to come this morning. I'm on behalf, here on behalf, because this day, this celebration is called June 10th. The state of Georgia has recognized this date, and some of you may say, what is June 10th? June 10th is also known as the Day of Jubilee. The word Jubilee comes from a Hebrew word found in our Bibles. You can find it in the Leviticus, 25th chapter, and the first few verses up to the eighth verse. But let me tell you a little bit about June 10th. You can open up the history books, you can find that on July 4th, Independence Day is in there. But if you go down in the history books, you won't hardly ever find Juneteenth. Juneteenth is called Emancipation Day. Abraham Lincoln signed the emancipation on January the 1st, 1863. It wasn't until June 19th, 1865, that we find that there were slaves that were in Texas that didn't even know that they were free. So after Robert E. Lee was defeated back in April of 1865, two months later, the Union General by the name of Gordon Granger read to them by proclamation by order of Abraham Lincoln that engavest in taxes that the slaves were free. And from that moment, it was the beginning of the Free of All United States slaves. Now, on this celebration on June 10th, it was involved with the churches. Churches celebrated as far as folks coming together, and there would be church services, it would be spiritual gospel singings. Let's see. They would have speakers come and to uplift and empower the community. Also, Juneteenth was stagnated for a while from 1865 because of segregation that played a major role in the development. And over the United States of America now, there are 45 states that recognize Juneteenth, recognize this day, and some have, the state of Texas has already recognized it as a national holiday. And so tonight, I'm here hoping that we can somehow, as far as the City of Social Circle, Georgia, we are a diverse city. I can see that our cultures are, you know, diverse, and we want to reach out to each and every culture, build relations. Our church is doing that. We reach out many times to invite speakers of different race and nationalities to come and to build a relationship. And in these days and time, what better time than now to build relationships with one another? All that is going along in this world, what better time than to do it now? And so I'm hoping that the City of Social Circle, Georgia, would come together and make June 19th this resolution on this day to proclaim this day as a celebration. We're asking maybe Friendship Park, the new Friendship Park, to be a designated spot. In that spot, I think we can promote different educational upliftments, scholarships, and get to know one another's culture as well. And so that is my proposal for the board, and I thank God for this opportunity to speak to you, you allowing me to speak to you this time. Am I?
Thank you, Pastor, for your comments. Do we have any council requests? Hearing none, next item up is the Agenda Approval.
I think the motion to approve the agenda has been...
A motion from Councilmember Price. Second from Councilmember Shelton. All those in favor, indicate to say aye. Motion passes. Next up, we have a series of public hearings, first of those being 399 Chestnut Street to divide a parcel into two lots for a minor subdivision. Ms. Barbara, if you will present that to us, please.
David, I need to recuse myself, because I got interest in this.
For the record, Councilmember Shelton has an interest in this property, so he has recused himself from voting.
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor and council. You have before you a application for a minor subdivision at 399 Chestnut Street. The zoning is RMD, which is residential medium density. This is the parcel of land on the screen that is a, it's one parcel as now, and Mr. Shelton is the applicant in this application, requesting to divide the lot into two and build two new homes. You'll see on the future land use map that it is the image for the Social Circle Historic District Character Area. This is in the historic district as well. The next one is the zoning. That yellow, where the arrow's at, is residential medium density, and the property is zoned as such. The Planning Commission, excuse me, has recommended approval to divide the lot into two, to be able to build two new homes. The HPC has heard the application for the demolition of the property, or the homes on the property, and it has been approved. It has a 60-day waiting period. Excuse me. The little barns down at the bottom will also have to come out due to they do not meet the setbacks. Building lot lines, they cross over, so those will be taken down as well. Now, I'm not sure if Mr. Shelton would like to come and do the applicant statement or not. No? He's okay?
Okay.
Okay, so that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Barbara. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the floor for comments. Any of those here that want to speak in favor of this application, please come forward. Seeing none, any of those wishing to speak in opposition of this application, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion. I guess the first question, you said this is part of the historical?
Yes, sir. This is in the historic district. It's just, in the historic map, it just takes those two little lots right there, takes that, but the green A.G. is not. It just goes right down Spring Street and captures those two little spots.
So holes built in the historical district, is he gonna have to fill them according to...
He has presented the house plans to the HPC, and according to what they said that night, that they liked the house plans, they weren't exactly, but it will be, it's similar to a couple of houses that have been built in downtown Monroe that's in the historic district. So he's kinda mimicked those house plans. They'll be a little bit bigger than the little houses right there on, at the corner, there's a little house right there. It'll be a little bit bigger than those, because he will have to meet the RMD. Square footage of the home is 1,600 square feet, so he will have to meet that and build the home 1,600. And how many of those are lots? They, okay, I can't see that that far. I apologize. It's gonna be, they have to be 100 feet wide, I believe. Let me see. I can read mine a little bit better.
Each lot would be about half an acre?
Yeah. Yeah, about a half an acre. It's split kinda right down the middle. It's a little, it's 1.04 acres now with a combined parcel, with one parcel, and then into two, it'd be like right at half acre.
So the houses around it, how many acres are there on?
The ones on Chestnut, the corner, it's not even a half acre. It's a little bit smaller.
So it'd be conform to the ones around?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion. I'll make a motion to approve. Have a motion from Councilmember Jackson?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate to say aye. Motion carries. Steve, can you join us?
The next application, we have a certificate of appropriateness in the Corridor Overlay, and this is at the corner of Bateman Drive in North Cherokee for a Waffle House. The property... The property is currently zoned general commercial. And where the start, that's the lot. They have road frontage on North Cherokee, Bateman, and Isaiah Court. The driveway will be on Bateman, and the address will be Bateman. They will not have a driveway off of North Cherokee. The first picture is looking back toward the doctor's office that's down Bateman Drive. This is the vacant lot on the corner from the Isaiah Court angle. And this is the vacant lot. This is right beside the gas station in Freshway. They have outlined the plat to have the parking on the side and in the rear. They will landscape around the front. And the landscaping that will go, the tree board has looked at it for them to just do landscaping around it. The lot really doesn't have any trees, so they will plant quite a few trees to meet the canopy coverage. And our standard Waffle House picture? If you noticed on the Walton Tribune, it was yellow and black last week announcing the Waffle House. So the Planning Commission did recommend approval for the certificate of appropriateness for the corridor overlay and that they would meet all the guidelines in their plans for the permitting and the inspections.
Thank you, Barbara. Is the applicant here?
He said he was coming, but I don't see him. So Drew, don't believe he made it.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara. This is a public hearing, so I'll ask for a public comment. Anyone here to speak in favor of this application, please step forward. Seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition of this application, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll bring it back. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the city council for discussion and action.
I'll make a motion to accept a planning and zoning recommendation.
Second. Have a motion from Councilmember Shelton, second from Councilmember Jackson. All those in favor indicate to say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number three, Barbara, if you'll present that. Amendment current zoning section nine-ten general commercial to allow outdoor event space as a conditional use.
Yes, sir. This application was presented by Mr. and Ms. Miller to amend our general commercial ordinance to amend the general commercial to add outdoor event space. Currently, our general commercial zoning would not allow someone to have an event on their property if the property does not have a similar business located on the property itself. You can see the general map. It has different arrows showing where general commercial is located in different areas of the city. The applicant and owner of two thirty South Cherokee Road is the applicant, and they have a vacant land located at two fifty South Cherokee Road and has made a request to amend that general commercial zoning to include the outdoor event space as a permitted use. Consideration of the outdoor event space could be an attractive use which would support commercial activity around the area by bringing community and visitors to an event. However, the term and use is broad and could also result in detrimental impacts depending on the property location and the scale of the outdoor events such as traffic, parking, noise, disruption of adjacent commercial residential uses. Under the conditional use category, based under the general commercial zoning, it provides a process to enable the approval of a use of specific location to be based upon the characters of the location, characteristics of the location. The criteria and evaluation of a conditional use as well set forth in the zoning ordinance. In the process, in order, if it went before the Planning Commission, it would go before the Planning Commission, an application, advertisement, and public hearing. In order to balance the creativity and entrepreneurial commercial activity with associated impacts that may occur specific to a proposed location or property, the staff would recommend that the Planning Commission consider approval of this use as a conditional use in the general commercial district rather than a permitted use. Like I said, the process for a conditional use would go, have an application. It would go before the Planning Commission, advertised to the public, and all the surrounding property owners would be invited to the public hearing and recommendation by the Planning Commission and public hearing and decision by the city council. The criteria to be considered in designing an application for a conditional use are well set forth in our zoning ordinance and is included evidence that the traffic will not be substantially hindered and will not lead to congestion, noise, traffic hazards. Parking and loading will be adequate. Public facilities, utilities are capable of serving the proposed use. The use conforms to the comprehensive plan. The site is adequate for the proposed conditional use, and it is comparable with the adjacent properties. Whether the use will create unreasonable adverse impacts upon adjoining land uses due to hours or manner of operation and more. And this is in the zoning ordinance that lays this out of all the criteria we would need to consider. In addition, a conditional use allows that the mayor and council may designate conditions that assure that the proposed use will conform to the requirements and the spirit of the ordinance. And that's the zoning ordinance, section fifteen oh one. The Planning Commission recommended approval to amend the general commercial district to allow outdoor event space as a conditional use. And the applicant is here, Mr. and Ms. Miller are here.
Thank you. John, like to speak?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. After reading through that whole list, Ben, I'm afraid of this thing too. But to make it a little less scary, what we're trying to do, number one, we're talking about the piece of property that is across from Ace Hardware. I think everybody here knows exactly which piece we're talking about. It's the old Connor Smith Realty Building plus the vacant lot next door. We are very much wanting to move forward as quickly as we can to make this property something that Social Circle is proud of. Right now, it's kind of stuck in a hold mood. We want to make it something that's positive, that everybody wants to come and be involved in. So none of the current ordinances allow us to have an outdoor event, or actually, it's really, the best use of it or description of it is an outdoor restaurant concept. So that's the whole purpose and the whole reason why we're here. It certainly falls in line with all the uses around it. Friendship Park is an outdoor event space. It's right there next door. This is complementary to that. Every restaurant in downtown brings people in to eat every night, brings traffic, brings people, brings patrons. This would obviously be a nice boon for businesses that decide to stay open while we're having these events or outdoor restaurants. So we're asking for your help at this point. We want to move forward to make this, like I said, a positive thing. The response that we've gotten from the community has been overwhelmingly positive. Everyone seems to want it, wants us to do it. You can see the other things that we've done in town. They're all of appropriate use and nice visually. We intend to do the same things here. We just need help navigating through the verbiage in the ordinances and the zoning and everything to allow us to do this thing that everyone that we hear from seems to be very much in favor of. So without if you have any questions, I'll.
Thank you, John. Questions for John?
Thank you, sir. First question is, the ordinance that you're speaking of is the Peddlers' ordinance that we put in place to, that's the ordinance that's holding up the outdoor event space? Or to allow you to put a restaurant?
Well, we had met, come before Mayor and Council two months ago and had asked for some adjustments to be made to the Peddlers' ordinance. Not sure exactly what is going there, but this actually is more appropriate because this would allow us to apply for a business license because this is a business, just like Willie's is a business, the grilling station is a business, the Villa Pizza is a business. This is a business. It's a restaurant concept, outdoor with mobile kitchens that are all state-regulated and inspected. And so, like I said, and it also fits in with everything else that we do downtown. We already do events downtown. We already do concerts. We already do people coming and eating outside. So it's nothing different than what we've already done. We're just trying to get the verbiage in the right places to allow us to do it.
Anything else for John? Thank you, sir. Okay, this is a public hearing. I'll open the floor for comment and ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
I'm in favor.
You want to come to the mic and say? Hearing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition of this application? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and/or action.
I think the first, the first line is, I think we, I think we discussed that they're basically, they're trying to bring in food trucks as a long-term is what we're looking at. And I think that we're, we're a little bit behind as a city on the food truck ordinance. So it might be a time that we could look at what they're talking about, but look into our ordinance and create a food truck ordinance before we jump ahead of the wheel on this. So if I have the opportunity to make a motion, I'll make a motion to deny this application. And then I'm going to put into my motion that we're going to work with the city attorney to create a food truck ordinance. So when we create this ordinance, they can come back and they'll be able to work up under the food truck ordinance, but we'll get that done so we can make a better ordinance. So if the Millers want to do it on their property, but Freshway decided to do it on their property, then we already created an ordinance all around the city instead of keep trying to do it by property, by property, by property as a city ordinance. So my motion is going to be to deny this application and to work with the city attorney to create a food truck ordinance. And then when that ordinance is applied, then they'll have the opportunity to do what they want to do.
Have a motion from Councilmember Jackson. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Jackson, second from Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate to say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is the Poplar Forest Preliminary Plan Review. Ms. Barbara, if you'll please give us a staff report on that.
Yes, sir. You have before you the preliminary plat approval for Poplar Forest, a fifteen-lot subdivision on Memorial Drive. The property is zoned R twenty-five, and this is low-density, single-family residential This is the map of the parcel. It is divided by Memorial, so there's on the north and the south of Memorial is the property. Okay, the zoning is zoned R twenty-five, which requires a medium lot, twenty-five thousand square feet, medium dwelling, unit size of twenty-four hundred square feet. The setback of thirty-five feet for interior roads on the front, fifteen on the side, twenty feet on the rear. All dwelling units must have a garage containing no less than four hundred and twenty square feet in the, no less than two automobiles. The subdivision process, this process on this one started last year, and the ordinance requires a three-step process for approval of a major five or more lot subdivision. The first step is the sketch plat, then the preliminary plan, then the final plat. We are at the preliminary plan stage on Poplar Forest subdivision. The zoning subdivision ordinance, every preliminary plat shall conform to existing zoning and subdivision ordinances of the city as well as all applicable government laws, rules, regulations applicable at the time that the proposed preliminary plan is submitted for the approval of the mayor and council. The Planning Commission made a recommendation last August to the mayor and council to approve the sketch plan for the Poplar Forest. Mayor and council approved the sketch plan in September twenty twenty. Conditions included on the preliminary plan beyond the minimum subdivision and zoning requirements. The Planning Commission chairman made recommendations for conditions at the sketch plat review. Those conditions are agreed to by the applicant and are stated on the front page of this preliminary plat. This is the plat with the lots divided into fifteen lots. The large one at the north end or south end is the biggest lot, and that's like sixteen acres. And the others are the small ones on Memorial. The PC Planning Commission made recommendation, they approved with the conditions in March to have the delineation of the wetland area on Lot Fifteen. The field mapping of wetland area completed by Environs LLC depicted on plat, USAC confirmed that not a jurisdictional wetland. EPD confirmed not state waters. And there's no access to Lot Fifteen from Wildwood. That was one of the conditions that the Planning Commission recommended to make sure it had access off Memorial, not the little alley or the little dirt road off Wildwood. And this is a map that's just showing you, and it's in the preliminary plan. It has the note on the plan of the delineated wetland. This plan has also been to the tree board. The tree board authority is to oversee compliance with the tree ordinance, which sets standards for tree conservation, protection, established maintenance, inspection, and removal, code section seven dash two six two. In R twenty-five district, twenty percent minimum conserve tree canopy is required. That's under the table two. The tree board approved the preliminary plan stipulating the compliance with the tree ordinance. The tree board also asked for a fifty-foot undisturbed buffer retention of existing trees along the rear lot lines south of Memorial Drive, adjacent to Branham Circle Homes. A twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer retention of existing trees along the rear lines north of Memorial. The tree board noted that the applicant may submit a revised landscape plan with more detail on existing tree locations if they wish to revise the approval stipulations. And that's all I have for, just, do you have any questions?
Any questions for Barbara?
No, I do, not for Ms. Barbara. I was going to make a comment that for some reason, somebody from the school hit me up saying that the Waffle House guy went to the school, so.
Oh, okay. He would have, he would have been here had he known where we were at.
Yeah, so.
Okay, because he, he did say he was on his way. We're switching places back to.
That's right.
Okay. We'll let him slide.
Any questions for Ms. Barbara on what's been presented thus far? If not, I know the applicant is here, Mr. Ben, if you'd like to speak.
Thank you for your time tonight. I appreciate Ms. Adele and Ms. Barbara, Jimmy Parker, working to get where we are now on a plan that far exceeds the minimums. We're excited about this. this neighborhood, about the walkability to downtown and to the schools. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for Mr. Dawson? Okay, hearing none. It's a public hearing. I'll ask for anyone to come forward to speak in favor of this application. Please come forward. Seeing none, is anyone here wishing to speak in opposition of this application? Please step forward, state your name and address, please.
My name is Nicholas Peters. I live at 492 Branham Circle. I'm speaking on behalf of the residents of the Squirrel Woods neighborhood. That's Branham Circle, Gabriel Way, and North Forest. I first want to thank each of you for your time that you're devoting to these meetings, as well as your time in preparation, reading the agenda packets and studying these properties. I also do want to say I appreciate that the applicant is sticking to the R-25 zoning that is current and the minimums there. However, we do have several concerns as a neighborhood and several requests for conditions, many of which have already been mentioned. I just want to reiterate those as their importance to our neighborhood. The first condition is that of the rear setback and increase in the rear setback from 20 feet to 65 feet, and agreeing with the tree board that 50 feet of that needs to be an undisturbed buffer. That also does need to apply to the lots which have the detention pond. The detention pond will be basically in the backyard of two of the neighborhood lots of Branham Circle, and that will become their view. So I feel it's only fair that they have that buffer applied to that lot as well, as well as decorative landscaping around the detention ponds. Memorial Drive is a thoroughway which many visitors who are attending events at our school drive down that highway. So two detention ponds on either side of that road, if not kept up or not hidden through proper landscaping, will give a negative view of our community. And so we don't want that. I want to emphasize again, the planning commission's comment of no access to Lot 15 through Wildwood Drive as current access for our sewage pump station, and the city needs to make sure they always have access to that because we have had some sewage spills because of that pump station. We also want to make sure that there is no land disturbance until the final plat is approved. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Anyone else here wishing to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Hearing none. Mr. Doster, you still have nine minutes or so remaining to answer any questions or to speak to what's been brought up by Mr. Peters.
My biggest concern is about the tree ordinance and the 50-foot buffer they're asking for. I'm a little, we're in the process of revising that plan somewhat and making a tree conservation area north of the sewer line, which will more than exceed 25% of the total tree mass on the property. Obviously, I would like to maintain the buffer that's been approved by the planning commission. There's a final plat process to go through, and I know that's a fluid situation, so we're going to work hard to do that. I just have some concerns about the engineering of committing to the request of, I notice, you know, it's 25-foot, the zoning is 25-foot, is that correct? 20 feet? It's 20 feet. And when I was riding the property the other day, a lot of the Branham Woods homes have buildings that are closer than 20 feet to the rear property line. And so it's a little bit unfair, in my opinion, that they can be closer to the property line than what we're trying to do. Obviously, I would want to bug them as much as possible and make it as beautiful as possible. So that's key. It's a little fluid with the tree board, and I just want to make that statement. I'm working hard towards that.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions for Mr. Dawson?
I just want to understand with the setbacks, are we saying that they cannot have any type of building or structure?
That's 60, their recommendation is 65 feet?
Yes, sir. The ordinance says you have to be 20 feet. That's a setback, and you cannot build anything in that setback. They agreed to do 65-feet setback on the lots. From the planning commission made the recommendation. That is on the plan, and they had asked for the so many feet undisturbed. Now, the tree board is separate. They actually approved the preliminary plat with a 50-foot undisturbed under their condition. Now, Mr. Doster has the ability to bring his plan back to the tree board. The tree board should be separate, actually, because the tree board has their own ordinance. And when they make a condition, it's a separate condition from mayor and council. So they approved the preliminary with that stipulation, but Mr. Doster has the option to come back and present a different plan all the way up to the time he's starting to want to build. Because once he gets in there trying to lay out the outline, he may decide that he could do better, do worse, and he would need to go back to the tree board first.
I guess my question is, what's Branham Circle setback?
It's 20.
What is Gabriel Way, the new one that we just approved that they built? Are there 20 as well? Harbor Glen? Yeah, Harbor.
Yes, they're 20.
It's 20 as well. So everything there is 20?
Yes, sir.
But we want Mr. Doster to do 65?
The planning commission asked for that, and...
They asked for 50.
They asked for 65.
65.
Mm-hmm, 65. And now that 25, that 20 is in there.
The 65 showing on the plat.
For clarification, Barbara, please explain the 65 feet. First of all, tree board, their recommendation should only be for the canopy, not the setbacks, in my opinion. So although they can and the council can consider that, but the setback of 65 feet agreed upon initially and is on the plat for consideration tonight is not undisturbed. Only 25 feet of that...
That's correct.
Or 20, but it was specified as 25 feet in here.
Yes.
It's what's defined as undisturbed buffer, meaning you can't do anything with it.
Can't build anything with it.
The 65 feet means you can't put a building on there, but you can remove some trees and, you know, landscape in that area.
Yes, you can have a yard.
You can have yard area in there.
Yes, sir.
That's what's before us as far as the conditions go this afternoon that's on?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
For the preliminary plat.
I mean, the lots are about 275 to 300 feet deep, so I can't see a house being built, you know, the building out of the house being built that far back. I see most of the houses to be 60 to 100 feet from the street.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Barbara or Mr. Doster?
On the plans right here, it shows this detention pond that backs up to Mr. Coker and it's pretty much Mr. Coker's lot. Is the setback, 65-foot setback, applied to that lot also? That detention pond, does it have to sit 65 foot off of that property line? Because the way it looks here, it doesn't.
It's 25.
It's 25 on the plan.
Right. There's 25 on the plan for the detention pond, so you violating the 65-foot buffer?
Setbacks don't apply to detention ponds because it's not a structure, but the proximity of the pond to the rear property line is limited by the ordinance to be 20 feet off the property line. So the grading for that pond has been pulled to 20 feet off the property line.
That's true.
And those detention ponds are maintained by?
HOA.
It'll be the HOA once that's set up.
Any other questions for the applicant or Ms. Schlagel?
I would like to say by doing two detention ponds, it reduced greatly the amount of grading and hopefully visibility to the street and to the residents. It took them to about 60 buffer versus 12. Burn, I'm sorry, burn.
The Waffle House man over. You won't let him know he got approved?
You got approved.
Okay, great. Sorry.
Sorry.
We enjoyed the middle school wrestling championship.
That's good. Thank you. Sorry for the mix-up, Drew.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing else from the applicant or Ms. Shermer, not Ms. Shermer, Ms. Schlagel, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and action.
I'll make a motion to approve it with the planning zoning recommendations.
And I'd like to amend your motion and add along with the tree board's 50-foot setback and on the Lot 15, that there be no roads or anything built on top of that sewer line. Because that's a, I'm pretty sure that's still a terracotta sewer line, and it's not going to hold up in that area if we start driving on top of it.
Okay, and there was one other condition that was mentioned, and I'll just mention it again, and that was to provide some trees or some kind of something around the detention ponds so they're not so visible to the community.
Yeah, we're planning on putting cryptomera, the tree around every eight feet, about a 40-foot evergreen, eight foot wide around all the canopy for those.
So Tyson, will you amend your motion to accept those conditions, Mr. Shelton?
I will amend my motion to accept the conditions, Mr. Shelton.
Okay, we have an amended motion from Mr. Jackson. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Jackson, second from Councilmember Shelton. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item for our public hearing is a presentation by our city manager of the capital improvement plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have the opportunity for public comment on the capital improvement plan for the five-year period beginning in July, fiscal year 2122 through fiscal year 2526. This plan was presented initially last month, and so this evening is the public input opportunity. The capital improvement plan is a portion of your annual budget consideration, and on the screen just shows all of the opportunities for public comment and council work on the budget between when it initiated and its scheduled date for consideration at the regular June council meeting. So capital improvements are typically one-time expenditures like facilities and infrastructure improvements, as opposed to elements of the operating budget, which are personnel and utility costs. The capital improvement plan addressed funding from SLOST, from the general fund, which are your general property taxes and licenses, from the water and sewer fund. Those revenues come from your water and sewer bills, and from the gas fund, which comes from your gas bills. Capital needs, the projects that are included herein, come from the comprehensive plan, input and strategic goals of the mayor and council, the master plans for the water and sewer systems, and coming up, the gas system, department head operational and regulatory insights, commissions and boards input, and citizens input. So the chart on the screen reflects the SLOST, which is a, which was approved in 2018, so it's a six-year SLOST. The categories that funding was allocated towards were transportation, public safety, building upgrades, parks and recreation, and water and sewer infrastructure. There's been approximately $1 million committed or spent thus far of the $3 million SLOST and about $1.8 million remaining. In the upcoming year, the funds, the projects that are scheduled for use of the SLOST funds are match for our paving program. That's the local maintenance and improvement grant from GDOT. That's LMIG match. The city is obligated to match 30% of the funds provided by the state. In addition, we have $30,000 allocated for roadway drainage improvements, $35,000 for replacement of a police vehicle, $90,000 to fund the roof replacement on City Hall, as well as the alarm, the cameras, and the storage shed. Then we have $45,000 to address the Welcome Center roof, window, and drainage repairs that the council heard about in the department heads' presentations. In water and sewer infrastructure, the SLOST funds in this first year will fund the Good Year Interceptor, which is, the design is completed, the easements are being finalized, which will eliminate that pump station. The Brookstone Interceptor, which will eliminate that pump station and provide match, the city's match, for the Mill Village sewer improvements that the city received a CDBG grant for this last year. That project should go to construction in the upcoming year. In the general fund, there is no millage rate increase projected. And so there also, we have spent a lot of time putting together the equipment replacement schedule. So the majority of the general fund, the majority of the general fund's funding is allocated to equipment replacement, and it's also noted that the American Rescue Act funding allocated to the city, a portion of it, per the council's direction at the last work session, will go towards the improvement of broadband infrastructure downtown. So in the more detail here, in the first year of the five-year plan, the vehicles to be replaced include the deputy fire chief, the brush and leaf truck, the mowing crew truck, and the cemetery crew truck. And you see of those vehicles, three of them are 15, almost 15 years old. Sorry. The deferred projects, the city has a significant number of project needs that with inadequate general fund resources for. And so we continue to include this information because these needs aren't going away. So we just want council to be aware of it, and we are continuing to look towards grants and other opportunities to help address these needs. In the water and sewer fund, we are, this capital improvement plan has been built on the continuation of the rate study recommendations of a 2.5% rate increase per year, planned Jifa borrowing, and also the implementation, as I mentioned previously, of the CDBG grant for sewer improvements in Mill Village. And also, we're proposing to pursue a CDBG grant for the Marco Estates area in 2324. Also, per the council's discussion and direction at the work session, the Jifa borrowing has been reduced in these first two years with use of the American Rescue Plan allocation that is coming to Social Circle. And just in summary, for fiscal year that begins in July, the sources of funds for the capital projects in water and sewer, 682,000 from the CDBG, those are federal funds, 775,000 comes from the city's capital cost recovery fund. That's those one-time fees that are paid for new customers into the water and sewer system to support additional capacity. So this is... capacity, so this is those funds being put to use. 1.2 million dollars in Jifa loan, 725,000, which is the first half to the, of the city allocation from the American Rescue Act, um, the second portion is 500,000 in FY twenty-two, twenty-three, and then the difference between those is proposed for the downtown broadband in twenty-two, twenty-three. And then finally, water fund, um, use of cash, uh, of 241,000. So, that's almost 3.7 million dollars in infrastructure improvements for the water fund. And that, those projects include water main replacements, uh, the Walton Pump Station, uh, interceptor, or removal of that pump station, and significantly, uh, water treatment plant improvements to the filter and the electrical system. It also funds the completion of our water meter replacements to enable radio read meters and the Brookstone valve, um, on the major water system in the back of Brookstone that is a significant source, uh, part of interconnection in our system. And as I mentioned, the Mill Village, uh, CDBG sewer improvement project, and then a, uh, water main, uh, extension on Clover Drive. In addition, in the first year of the CIP, we are including the replacement of vehicles and equipments in the water and sewer fund, um, and you see there the sewer work truck replacement, which is a two thousand and four, uh, the sewer crew truck replacement, and the replacement of a two thousand and four Kubota. In the gas fund, uh, that gas fund is stable, and however, we are completing right now a master plan for the system, which will be presented at the next council work session, and so, uh, funding for those system improvements will be necessary to maintain its viability in capacity for future services. Also, current city residential and commercial gas rates are the lowest in the region, um, so we have recommended rate evaluation, and we'll discuss that later this evening. The projects proposed in the first year of the five-year CIP in the gas fund include completing the gas meter radio read system. As the council is aware, we have one meter reader that reads gas and water meters, and so this system, uh, enables the drive-by radio read of both, so it significantly improves efficiency and accuracy in our meter reading system. Then there is also, uh, funding for gas system extensions and improvements. The ATV supports the inspection of our gas rights-of-way, which is required on a periodic basis for safety purposes, um, and also in vehicle and equipment replacements, the gas crew truck replacement, and a compressor replacement. That concludes my overview. As I mentioned, this evening, uh, is the scheduled public comment on the capital improvement plan. Action on this would not be until the council acts on the budget in June. I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions for Ms. Shermer? Hearing none, this is a public hearing, so I'll invite anybody to the microphone that would like to speak in favor or in opposition of our capital improvement plan. Hearing the seating none, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, no action is required by the council this afternoon, as Ms. Shermer indicated.
I will note that this document, um, is also available on the city's website.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, uh, financial statements.
Ms. Jennifer Fricks, the finance director, is stepping forward.
Hello. Okay, so, these are the March financials, which means we are three-quarters of the way through the year, which is seventy-five percent. So, in our general fund, we are at ninety-one point nine-eight percent in the revenue right now. This time last year, looks like we were at eighty point six-six. I forgot to print myself out a copy this time, so I'm sorry. Um, the expenses, we're at seventy-three point six-two overall. Of that, one hundred and fourteen percent is capital, and seventy-two point zero-one percent is operating. Um, our expenses this time last year were at seventy-five point nine-six overall. In water, we are at fifty-nine point two-five percent, um, total. Of that, twenty-five point six-five percent is Jifa loan proceeds, and seventy-nine point two-eight percent is operational, or not operational, um, regular revenue. And then this time last year, we were at sixty-four point three-one. Um, in our expense category, we are at sixty-one point four-nine overall. Of that, seventy-two?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven percent is, um, capital, and forty-nine point seventeen percent is operational. This time last year, we were at forty-two point four-seven percent. For gas, our revenue, we are at sixty-nine point two-three percent. This time last year, we were at sixty-six point zero-two percent in our, um, expenses, seventy-eight point six-one percent, and capital at ninety-four point three-one percent, operational at seventy-four point nine-eight. This time last year, sixty-three point seven percent. And solid waste, um, seventy-six point zero-eight percent revenue at this time. This time last year, we were at seventy-five point six-five percent. Um, for expenses, we are at sixty-five point three percent. This time last year, we were at sixty-six point four-two percent. So, across all of our funds, we are healthy. Do y'all have any questions?
Any questions for Jennifer?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and congratulations again on your award. Uh, next up, we have the consent agenda. Ms. Shermer, if you will, introduce those items to us.
Certainly, we have the approval of council meeting minutes for March sixteenth, for the retreat on March twenty-seventh, and for the work session on April first. There is approval of surplus property disposal, which is an old tractor with bushog behind it. Um, advertisement of a comprehensive plan amendment consideration. Uh, that advertisement would be placed for a May eighteenth public hearing at council to consider the change in the comprehensive plan, and this relates to the Stanton Springs North proposal. And then finally, approval of the financial policies update. You have a redlined, um, copy in your packet, and the update is primarily related to the equipment operations and replacement schedule.
Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'm sorry, who made the motion? Steve. Motion from Councilmember Shelton, and a second from Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Old business, uh, we have appointments for our boards to consider tonight. If you're, if you're like me, you need larger print to, to look at. We've, um, already, last month, did a few of these. Uh, before us tonight, uh, looks like the first set to consider Downtown Development Authority of Social Circle. I would ask that, um, to get a motion for one, two, looks like three of these members need a motion to extend their, um, their term by one year. For some reason, they were just, um, given three-year terms initially, and by our charter or ordinance, that's a four-year term. So, I'll ask for a motion to extend those that are three years to a four-year term.
Who you, I thought we was gonna, I thought we were gonna fix all that when we reappointed them.
Well, you, if you do that, you have to wait until they drop off, so you can do it now, or you can wait.
Well, one of them's dropping off next year.
Yeah, actually, two of them.
Two of them are dropping off next year.
All, 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 all three of them drop off next year.
That's it. We can fix them all, they'll all, and then everybody will be on a four-year term, just about it, except for Adolphus and Ms. Lambert.
Adolphus is not.
They, but they're appointed by other boards, so.
Steve, they're, they're not, they're not on.
Yep.
They're not on this. They're on the Main Street. We're back on the Development Authority. Yeah.
One, would you skip one?
DDA, huh?
You skip one, because mine's different, yours?
No, we've got the Cemetery first, which we, we've already, you've already handled. And then it's got the Downtown Development Authority, which is a seven-member board. There are, in, in there, there are two terms that expire this year, and that's, uh, Ms. Debbie Connor Smith and Mr. Ankers.
I thought we'd already done, reappointed Debbie Connor. We didn't do any of that?
We didn't do either of, of those for the Development Authority.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Debbie Connor and Lurie Maddox to the Development Authority.
Okay, Debbie Connor to renew her term, and Lurie Maddox to assume, uh, the term, or to be appointed to replace John Ankers, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, we have a, a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Shelton, second by Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, looks like the next one that I see is the Library Board. We have one vacant position for a six-year term.
I, I talked to the lady at the library, and Ashley Johnson had filled out a application and turned it into Susan the other day, and she's been doing a lot of stuff.
Right.
With the library, so I'll, I'll nominate her for that.
Okay, we have a, a motion to appoint Ashley Johnson to a six-year term on the Library Board. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion, and a motion from, uh, Steve Shelton, second from Trace of Price. All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I have a question for clarification. This is not fulfilling the unexpired term, this is a new six-year term.
This, what, what it does, according to the bylaws of the, of the library, as I read them, if you have a vacancy that occurs, such as this one has, um, you can have up to a seven-year term, so they will finish out, they're, they're appointed immediately to serve until a new term begins in June of this year, which will be a six-year term. So, basically, they are in reality serving six years and a, a number of months. So, that is correct, is it? Okay, it looks like the next group is the Main Street Commission, and there are one, two, three, four, five, six members that their term expires this year.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint Travis Parr. Oh, tr, for a point, Travis Parr.
Please, please, Stephen, your motion pleases, and, uh, name who you're replacing.
Well, I, I'm gonna give you a list, and then you'll figure out who I'm gonna replace.
Okay. All right.
Travis Parr, Lisa Callahan, Jimmy, Jenny Martin, Nathan Boyd, Ashley Quick, Carrie Brewer.
I don't believe Mr. Boyd is up.
Yeah, he is.
No, it's twenty.
Mr. Boyd is January of twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Who's, who's right there with him, according to mine?
That's Amy and Carrie Brewer. I don't think you, did you say Carrie?
Okay. I said Carrie Brewer. But I had Nathan Martin, too, I looked at it wrong.
You have five, Travis Parr, Lisa Callahan, Jenny Martin, Ashley Quick, and Carrie Brewer.
Y'all need to put their expiration date closer to their names.
I can rearrange it. I sure will.
Jenny Martin. Chad Shumay. He was right next to Nathan Boyd.
That's who's going on the board?
He's already on there.
Yeah, okay, so you're, you reappoint Chad?
Chad Shumay is, uh, I met.
Chad is a reappointment, Carrie is a reappointment, Jenny is a reappointment, Lisa's a reappointment.
And the others?
Travis, Ashley are new appointments.
So, who are we adding? I'm, I'm kinda.
Just two. Ashley Quick and Travis Parr. How many are being reappointed?
Uh, would be four.
Four. Which is Callahan. Callahan, Jenny Martin, Chad Shumay, Carrie Brewer.
Okay. All right, we have a, a motion by, for appointments by Councilmember Shelton. Is there a second to those appointments?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Shelton, second by Councilmember Price. All those in favor indicate the same aye.
Discussion, please.
I'm sorry.
Can we get a discussion?
All right.
I'm just looking at, once again, I got another board that District Two has one's representation, and I had a young lady that filled out for this position, and she still will not be able to represent my district. Once again, just wanna be, make a note of that.
You have someone in mind that you would like to appoint, and can ask Councilmember Shelton to reconsider, or stay with what he's appointed thus far?
I just wanna make a note that Tamika Nash filled out an application for this particular board.
Who did?
Tamika Nash.
I thought you said that was another board.
Well, she did this one, or the Industrial Development Authority, but I don't know what we're gonna do with that board yet. But I'll just, I just wanna make a note applying with his recommendation.
All right, so noted by, uh, Councilmember Jackson. So, we have a, a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor indicate the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next authority is the Social Circle Development Authority. It appears there are one, two, three, four vacancies on that board. It's not, uh, they have indicated to me that they're, they don't have a need to meet or don't see a need to meet, so whether you, um, whether you do that tonight, or if you defer, vote on that, either way, I think will be appropriate.
Mayor Kiner, can I just make one comment?
Sure.
With the passing of Mr. Sherrill making that appointment, um, vacant, there is no chair, and with the resignation of the vice chair, so there are no officers.
Well, there's Chair.
Okay.
Hal Daley's Chair, Frank was, Hal was appointed first.
You're right, you're right, forgive me.
So, what they don't have.
They don't have a vice.
Uh, they don't have a quorum.
They don't have a quorum.
So, it would take at least one more appointment for them to have a quorum to meet. Okay, I'll note that that, um, Development Authority appointments have been postponed temporarily. And I believe we did the tree board the last time, so I think that. And I believe we did the Tree Board the last time, so I think that completes our board appointments. Is that right, Susan?
Yes, we're pretty good on the board.
Okay. Uh, that completes our old business, brings us to, uh, new business. And that's a, um, presentation of the Recommended Operating Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, um, I will present a summary of the Recommended Operating Budget. Uh, you have before you a packet that is not the full budget. It is just simply the summary. We have used the, an online ClearGov budgeting, um, document software, and so that, we should have the online and the hard copy available publicly and to council members by April twenty-seventh. Uh, maybe by Friday to council members, but all of it will be live by April twenty-seventh. So what I will present this evening is a, a summary similar to what we did last year of the Recommended Operating Budget. Um, on the screen, the schedule for the operating budget consideration, um, is provided. So following this evening's summary, uh, you each will receive the hard copy of the line items and descriptions operating budget by April twenty-seventh. Your first work session on that budget will be May sixth. Then the operating budget public hearing will be May eighteenth at your regular meeting. On June third is your next work session, at which further discussion can happen on the operating budget if the city would like. Um, and also your mill rate public hearing, and then your final public hearings in action are scheduled for your regular meeting of June fifteenth. This summary includes the guidance provided by council at the work session of April first. It also includes all of the departments' input, um, in their budgets, and it does represent a balanced budget. So the line items are defined and balanced, and you, as I mentioned, will get them within a few days. So overall, the Recommended Operating Budget is put together with consideration of the work plan in the city's comprehensive plan, consideration of the council's strategic priorities, addressing concerns and service needs of the community, city boards, and commissions. Oh, I'm sorry, Susan is passing out your packet right now. Thank you, Susan. Continuing infrastructure investments and implementing the vehicle and equipment replacement schedule, supporting local and regional industrial and economic growth in partnership with our economic development entities, expanding transparency and access of services to our citizens, supporting staff growth, training, and retention, and providing current city services effectively, efficiently, and professionally. The proposed total budget, um, my apologies, the percent change column has not been updated, but you do have the same table in your packet on the second page. The numbers are all correct. The percent change is the column that is not updated on the screen. So in the general fund, uh, budget, uh, the proposed budget is a total of five point six million dollars, which is an increase from the current year, but a decrease from the year previously. And that is largely due to the fact that we budgeted, um, in very conservatively last year, anticipating a much larger pandemic impact on services and revenues than actually occurred. In the water fund, uh, the budget recommendation is seven million dollars, which is significantly higher um, than our five point three, five million in prior years. But again, this reflects investment from the CDBG grant received. The American Rescue Plan is added to this, as well as investment from the city's capacity recovery charges. The gas fund is in line with prior years, and it does include a rate increase, which I will go through in a little bit more detail, and reflects current wholesale gas prices as anticipated for the upcoming year from, um, our agency, MGAG, and also the current industries we have now in town. Uh, we have the Solid Waste Fund, which includes, um, a three point five percent increase in contract costs, and I will address those as I go a little further. Continuing confiscations funds revenues used for public safety, uh, vehicle replacements, police vehicle replacements, and SPOSS. So the total budget of all of our funds proposed is eighteen point five million dollars. In the general fund, there is no millage rate increase included in the recommended projections. The current mill rate is seven point nine percent, and we would recommend no increase in that. A tax digest growth of five to eight percent is projected by the county assessor from growth and reassessments. And we did actually today get our preliminary digest, and the increase, um, it's, it's in line with that anticipation, and there has been more growth added to the digest than reassessments, about two-thirds, one-third. Um, sales tax receipts are projected to remain at current levels, which is strong. As I have mentioned, we did not receive the pandemic reduction in, uh, local option sales tax receipts that were anticipated. It's continued steady and strong from the prior year. It does include a continuation of payment in lieu of taxes from our utility funds that support lower millage rates. Our general fund has achieved a fund balance at, at the council's target level, and no use of fund balances projected or recommended. And as I discussed earlier this evening, significant general fund capital projects continue to be deferred. Uh, these are just two pie charts that reflect generally the scale of the revenues in the general fund in proportion to each other and the expenses by department. So in terms of the revenue, the light green large portion is property taxes, sales taxes, and franchises. And then the blue is the portion that, of payments in lieu of taxes to the general fund from your utility funds. That's by far the majority of your general fund. In terms of where those funds go, the light green is police administration, and the light blue is fire. So public safety is about fifty-six percent, um, which is what it has been and would be typical, um, for a city of this size. The next large sections are highways and streets administration in the brighter pink, and financial administration in the lighter pink. And it should be noted that the finance administration includes the payments made for inspections of building permits, building permit review and building inspections. And as the council is aware, that is done on a contractual basis. Um, so if we don't have applications, we don't pay those fees. If we do, we pay seventy-five percent of the fees that come in, so it's directly related. And in the current year, as well as our recommended budget, uh, we do anticipate building construction to remain and continue strong as it is right now. In the water and sewer fund, we have a stable outlook. As I mentioned earlier this evening, the revenues reflect the CDBG grant award to the city and the American Rescue Plan. Initial allocation, uh, re, as council will recall, there are, that, that funding of one point four million is coming to the city in two allocations, one sometime within the next sixty days, and the other sometime in twenty twenty-two. So we have budgeted half of it for the fiscal year we're looking at, and half of it for the subsequent. And also, as discussed, the rate increase of two point five percent is, uh, recommended to continue to support the investment in our infrastructure. These pie charts provide an overview of where the funds go in the general fund. The pie chart on the left, uh, shows the distribution between the water distribution system, which is light green on the top right, uh, water treatment, which is the lighter blue on the bottom, and then sewer collection and treatment, which is the darker pink on the left. And then debt service, um, and other financing uses, which include payments to the general fund, is in the lighter pink. So it's almost equally distributed between water distribution, water treatment, and sewer treatment. And then if we look at, um, more specifically, the type of expenses on the pie chart to the right, you see that almost half of the expenses, or a little more than half, are projected to go to capital improvements or infrastructure investments. Then the light blue is personnel services. So, um, as with many city services, uh, our people are how we provide the services. So the recommended water and sewer rates, um, include a two point five percent water and sewer rate increase. The current rate of a dollar sixty per meter would go to a dollar sixty-four per meter per month. And then the volume rate for water is proposed to increase from ten dollars and twenty-five cents to ten dollars and fifty-one cents per thousand gallons. For the average customer using three thousand gallons a month, the bill would go for water. The bill would go from thirty-two dollars and thirty-five cents to thirty-three dollars and seventeen cents. The sewer rate is also projected to increase at two point five percent, from nine dollars and seventy cents to nine dollars and ninety-four cents per thousand gallons. And again, for the average sewer customer using three thousand gallons per month, the bill would go from twenty-nine dollars and nine cents to twenty-nine dollars and eighty-two cents. So combined, if you are a water and sewer customer using the average of three thousand gallons per month, the monthly bill would go from sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents to sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. In the gas fund, as we discussed in, in detail at the work session, rate changes are recommended. Um, social circle is, right now, the lowest rate, um, in the region, and even with these recommended rate increases, we will still be amongst the lowest rate in the region. Uh, industrial gas usage is steady and gradually increasing, as we have gained a few industries over the last year, or industry expansions, um, that are good gas customers. In terms of expense by type in the gas fund, the light green represents our cost to purchase wholesale gas. Um, so we purchase wholesale gas, and then we operate the distribution system and, and support the customers, and that is our total, um, gas, natural gas fund. So the light green is what we pay to buy wholesale gas from the Transco line. And then the light blue, uh, shows the amount of funding that is then transferred through a pilot payment to the general fund. So as I mentioned, in the gas costs, the components are the wholesale cost of gas, the customer charge, which is a per meter charge, and then the distribution charge, which is per MCF. So the rate structure is a bit more complex than the water and sewer rates, um, because in each customer class, residential, commercial, industry, we have a different customer charge, um, and distribution charge. So our, the proposed rates included in the recommended budget are to increase the customer charge to nine dollars per month for residential, and the proposed distribution charge to three dollars and eighty cents. In the commercial, the proposal is to increase the customer charge to fifteen dollars per month, and the rate, um, distribution also to three dollars and eighty cents per MCF. For small industry, the proposed customer charge is proposed to be increased to fifty dollars, and no change in the distribution. For medium industry, no change in the customer charge is recommended, but the distribution charge is recommended to be increased to two dollars and fifty cents. And then finally, in the large industry, no change in the customer charge, but an increase recommended in the distribution charge. So overall, that results in approximately a five percent increase, um, in the gas rate. Of course, each specific industry and, uh, customer class would be a little bit different, but overall, it's five percent. And it's important to note that the gas rate has not been increased for a number of years, at least six. In the solid waste fund, we have a, uh, three point five percent curbside refuse and recycling rate increase proposed, and that is because the contract cost will increase by three point five percent under our multi-year contract. That increase is tied to a consumer price index marker. And so this increase is simply passing on what the contractor is charging the city, um, from the city to the customer. So that monthly bill would increase from fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents to sixteen dollars and fifty-five cents. That's the regular rate. The senior rate is a little bit, um, reduced, and so that rate would also have a three point five percent increase. Generally, um, the council did stress their, um, their support for responding to the needs that you heard from the department heads, um, in terms of their staff and retention of staff. So the general employee provisions that are included in the recommended budget are one new position, which would be a utility locator. That's the person that basically, when somebody is planning to dig, or some construction project is planned to dig, they have to call a number. And then every owner of an underground utility in that area is obligated under state law to go paint lines on the ground to show where our utilities are located. So that is something we must do, because we own gas, water, and sewer lines. Um, with, over time, the extension of our systems and the amount of construction happening in the area has really increased the load of our utility locates, in that it's basically a full-time job, and we don't have a full-time staff member for it. So that hinders our ability to provide the services we need to, to support mostly our gas customers and new gas, um, new gas extensions and, uh, service connections. So one new position is proposed, which would be this utility locator, one person. And it, and that, the cost of that in the recommended budget is split between the water fund and the gas fund, because those are the utilities that are located. Um, in addition, we have, I have included in the recommended budget reclassification of existing positions to enhance career, service oversight from a service perspective to the customers, and also to enhance career track, um, opportunities for our staff members. So there's three areas where that's included. The first would be in the Public Works Department, where a vacant position would be reclassified to a rights-of-way manager that would oversee then the street, the cemetery, and the water distribution functions. And so the street work and the water distribution happens within the rights-of-way, and this will enable those functions to be better supervised and also coordinated, um, to, and they do support each other now in terms of flagging and line replacements and oversight of construction. So that would be, will be a significant benefit to service and also to making sure that our street cuts and street paving and pothole patching is more closely connected. It also provides career track mobility, um, within the Public Works Department. In the Fire Department, there are three firefighter positions currently that are proposed to be reclassified to Fire Sergeant. So that would be the next step up, and that would provide a sergeant position per shift. So each shift would have a designated and classified supervisory position. In the Police Department, there are two. In the police department, there are two police officer positions that are proposed to be reclassified to police corporal position. And that will be an opportunity through an internal promotion process in the police department. And that will provide that supervisory position on each night shift.
I got a question for you right there.
Okay.
You want to take questions?
I'll try.
All right. We talked about those positions as the police chief and fire chief.
Yes.
And all those other positions matching up.
Yes.
And I see that the fire chief did.
Yes.
But then we're going to create we've got fire sergeant and we've got police sergeant and there's two pay grades different. I don't I mean, if we're going to make it a level, if it all was the same, I don't understand how it got different. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Like when they were combined, everybody, both fire and police made the same. But for some reason or another, we're trying to treat them different here. And I think it all needs to be if we're going to pay a fire sergeant, I mean, going to pay a police sergeant twenty-one, then that's what a fire sergeant should be making and vice versa. We're going to pay a fire sergeant nineteen, then we need to pay a police sergeant nineteen. We don't need to make a difference in them.
So that differential, most recently, was from the public safety market rate changes. But you're exactly right. The the progression is nineteen, twenty, twenty-one in police and eighteen, nineteen, twenty in fire. So if the council would like for us to readdress that, we can certainly do so.
I see the difference of I understand the same with positions, but I do see the difference of pay because the the job level is different.
No.
Yeah.
No.
If a fireman, if I'm can I just just speak on it?
Art, you got an EMT. They all their EMTs and their firemen, they carry two certifications.
Understand that. I'm just saying if a fireman or EMT go to a service call and they're walking in and somebody's having a heart attack or something and they're addressing that issue. But if a policeman pulls over a car, they can be endangered or gunfire. The fireman is going into a situation where somebody's just, you know, laying with a laying there with a I just see a different level of of job. I mean, I I understand that the names are close to being the same, but I see a different level of the jobs.
Let me ask you this. I've been a fireman, and I've been in the situation to where when I got there, I had to fight, just like the police officer, when they go to a call, they have to be scared for their life. It's the same. You don't know what you're walking into when you walk into it.
I mean, I just see I do see a difference. And I've I've looked at that because you made that comment last time, and I looked all over at different cities and all the cities around, and I'm just looking at different, not even just Walden County or Newton County. I'm just looking different as around. I mean, they do make a a slight difference of pay. But that's just my opinion on that. I mean, I do see, looking around, that they do make a slight difference. I mean, it's not a huge difference, but it is a slight difference of pay.
Ms. Sherman, will you give us a comparison on that?
I mean, I'm just and I know, I mean, one of our biggest our biggest budget item is public safety. I mean, that's that's where all our expenses at is public safety. So if we start increasing increasing and leveling off, then that fifty fifty-six percent of that pie chart is going to go up more and that seven point nine that we're holding might need to be eight point two or eight point three to try to balance out that on pie chart. I mean, the money's got to come from somewhere.
I'll be happy to bring more comparisons to the work session.
Just just, you know, throughout the cities, just to see if everybody's balancing, everybody's balanced. But if it is a slight difference, I mean, it's it's.
You got to you don't just look at the at the job. You can't just look at what they're paying them. You got to look at what they're requiring. I mean, if you're just going to look at the job, then fine. But if you're going to look at the requirements, you need to look at the requirements.
I would like, I mean, the requirements.
Our requirements as as.
Look at the requirements. And when we're doing a comparison, let's look at caseloads per those those.
That ain't got nothing to do with it.
Those other.
The caseload does not have anything to do with it. If you either go either you're going to have a fire department or you ain't going to have a fire department. Do you pay for a Class Four ISO rating or you pay for a Class Two ISO rating? Which one you want? You either pay for a police department or you don't pay for a police department. You can't go by the caseload or the call numbers. You don't ever know what's going to happen, when it's going to happen. You don't ever know when you're going to need them and when you ain't going to need them.
And our fire department is just as important as our police department.
And I I agree with that.
You know, we have to think about medical. They come out, you want somebody that's trained, skilled, and you have to pay for that that type of service. And they make a lot of, you know, they make a lot of calls because they get there first before the the ambulance get there. That's a really, really important service that we are offering our citizens.
Ms. Sherman, if you will, for the upcoming work session, which will also hear presentation, if you will give us that two things, comparison with the other cities and leveling off the the two organizations if we do utilize the same pay grades or pay scales for each of the titles within those.
And can we get a budget impact on that as well? How much that's going to increase the budget?
Yeah.
Is that going to and also does when we do this, is this going to, are you going to look at the numbers of years of longevity and fit them into the new pay grade?
Yes. In the market rate study adjustments, well, typically in the reclassification, let me answer that question first. In the reclassification, the employee would go to the minimum of the new classification or a five percent increase from where they are currently, if they're currently making more than the minimum of the new classification. And that's in the personnel rules for promotions. In the market rate salary adjustments, the the way we did it for the public safety and the way the budgeting is recommended in this proposal is for employees that have been with the city for one or two years, they get one additional step. They would go to the minimum of the new grade. And then if they've been here for one or two years, they would get one additional step to reflect that tenure. If they've been here with the city in the same job for three to six years, they would receive two steps. And if they've been with the city for seven or more years, they would receive three steps. And so that's that's where everybody would fall on the new scale in the market rate adjustments for those positions that are in market rate adjustment. And then for any individual employee who is currently making more than that, they would move to the new scale at the point that reflects at at least what they're making. So no employee would receive a reduction from the market rate. And then after the market rate salary adjustments are addressed to the positions that need to be brought within market, all employees in the recommended budget, I have included a cost of living increase for all employees of two point five percent effective July first. And that is based on CPI, and that is important to do in the city so that we maintain our market competitiveness and don't get out of range. And then in addition to that, all employees are eligible for a merit increase of two percent. That's moving from one step to the next in their grade if they have met or exceeded expectations during the prior year in their evaluation. So in summary, all employees would receive the cost in the recommended budget if approved. All employees would receive the cost of living increase of two point five percent. All employees that meet or exceed expectations would receive a merit increase of an additional two percent. And then for those positions that need to be adjusted to market rate, they would receive additional raise to that new grade plus one, two, or three steps for their tenure. And then the reclassification is similar. They would go to the new grade, and then they would also get the cost of living and the merit increase. So all of that together is summarized in the packet that I have handed out in the personnel section. The total impact of the market rate salary adjustments across all funds is seventy-six thousand dollars. And that also, this is on about, I don't know, third, kind of in the middle of the packet, there's a memo titled Personnel Changes. So the total of the market rate adjustments cost is seventy-six thousand dollars. And that also lists the steps based on tenure or years in the position with the city. The cost of living adjustment impact to the city total across all funds is eighty-six thousand dollars. And the merit award impact across all funds is sixty-nine thousand dollars. In addition, you'll see in this memorandum, we have also included in the recommended budget the progression for employees in the natural gas department, on the streets crew, and in the water distribution crew, where and this responds to comments that were made by your managers related to having a a process where a long-term city employee in those functions can work by obtaining additional licenses or certifications up to a a higher pay level because they're worth more to the city. And that will enable us to help retain our staff as we train them rather than lose them because that has a significant impact on the city's providing services and also has a cost impact on the city when we are continually turning over staff in those areas. That's especially critical for social circle because what I do not I'm sure our residents do not realize is our crews are two people, two or three people. So, you know, when you're calling out the natural gas crew, that's only two people and a manager. So those people have to be well skilled. There's not a group of five people, you know, three of which can lean on two that are very skilled in what they do. The same thing is true of streets. The same thing is true of water distribution. Also listed, that progression cost per fund is anticipated to be less than five thousand dollars because it will take time for employees to do that training, get those certifications, and and move up through that progression. But it does provide a significant career track opportunity that doesn't exist right now, and that has really hurt us, particularly in natural gas. Some of the other comments that you heard were our difficulty in hiring and retaining treatment plant operators, both water and wastewater. And those groups are, as you see in the packet, are within the the positions that are recommended for the market rate adjustments. There are no changes proposed for the city health insurance or benefits. So the changes, the city has a very strong health insurance program. And when we implemented the benefit dollars in the city-funded HRA, that dropped our health insurance costs significantly, and we are still receiving the benefits of that reduction in cost. So and and the combination of the health insurance and benefit dollars meant that that investment in benefits to the employees stayed with the employees. It just gave them the opportunity to select from which other benefits beyond health insurance that savings could be allocated to for them. So there are no changes in those programs in the recommended budget. And the health insurance subsidy that the city council approved this last year that would fund half of the cost of an employee's health insurance premium for dependents or family is continued in the recommended budget going forward. And that's been a really important benefit for our employees because, as we talked about previously, those that additional cost to cover family was about a thousand dollars a month, which is most is was unaffordable. But with these changes, we have, I believe, ten employees out of our seventy that are extending their health insurance to some portion of their family. Finally, we have a very large organizational chart, which we will simplify in the budget. Next steps going forward, the recommended budget will be published both online and hard copy, and we're excited to to show that to you. Unfortunately, it wasn't quite ready for tonight, but we'll provide the hard copy on April twenty-seventh and do a brief overview of the online version at your work session on May sixth. So that will be published by April twenty-seventh. And that online budget system, ClearGov, is very powerful not only to look within the city's budget, but also to enable the public to compare and contrast how much this city spends on certain things versus other cities. So we'll have that by April twenty-seventh. Your next work session is May sixth, and the first topic on that work session is continuing this budget deliberations. The public hearing on the budget is scheduled for May eighteenth, the first one. You'll have another one at your works with the work session on June third, and then the final public hearing in action consideration for the budget on June eighteenth. And I'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Sherman. We do have an executive session that completes our business for this evening. Need a motion for executive session for personnel and litigation.
So moved.
Motion from Councilmember Price and a second from Councilmember Shelton. All those in favor indicating aye. Motion carries.